Okay, we have some guidelines for public appearances. Everybody will get to speak. And the guidelines are, all individuals interested in addressing the board must approach the microphone, this one up here at the table, state your full name and address. This includes addressing the board regarding matters that are on the agenda for the board's consideration. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. Staff will raise a sign when one minute is, and she will be, when one minute remains. All testimony must be directed to the chair. Individuals shall refrain from disruptive arguments, profanity, insults, or attacks against any persons. There shall be no demonstration or comments from members of the audience during public appearance, or while the board discusses the matters before on the agenda. Failure to adhere to the guidelines will result in a verbal warning. If after such warning, an individual would be asked to leave the meeting soon if they misbehave again. So, who wants to be first on public appearances?
Mr. Chair, when people come to the microphone, if they could remove their masks so we can properly hear everybody's speech.
Yes, and state your address, name and address.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Roger Hippert, 11 North Minnesota Street, New Ulm, Minnesota. I'm an attorney and I'm here on behalf of Wade and Valida Cordis in connection with the application for the conditional use permit by Mikeletz Properties. I had emailed some materials to everyone on the commission and the county attorney at the end of the day yesterday. Sorry I did not get that to you sooner. In addition, I'd like to supplement the record. I have a letter that was sent by Dr. Kelsey Jurick, an equine surgeon at the University of, or at Oklahoma State University regarding the impact of gunfire upon horses. I'd ask that all of you take a look at that. In reviewing this, I think what you need to please keep in mind is the fact that there are two, this came actually before the board on two other occasions, 1993 and 2005. When the conditional use permits were issued at that time, this board specifically limited them to the use of shotguns only. And there's a reason for that. They specifically prohibited the use of rifles. They had to have reasons for that. The question is why? The obvious answers would be because it limits the amount of shooting and the amount of noise, and it limits the amount of danger. What the applicants are requesting is to substantially change this situation, which is going to permanently affect the quality of life for everyone living in this area. What they're considering, or they're asking you to do, is to approve an arrangement where they're anticipating 150 shooters a day, every day of the week. If those people come to this gun range, if they just shoot 30 rounds, that is 4,500 gunshots per day. If they have a 10-hour day, that's 450 every hour on average. That would end up being a gunshot more frequently than every 10 seconds. My clients, Wade and Valida Cordis, live right next to this property. They are within 500 feet, substantially within 500 feet, of the long-range rifle range. They want to shoot long-range rifles, they want to shoot handguns, they're going to have trap, they're going to have skeet. There are specific noise requirements that they have to comply with, and I strongly disagree with the Planning and Zoning Commission's report, which stated that it's the obligation of a complainant to provide those test results. That's nowhere in the statute. It says the requestor. The board can request it, the applicant can request it, you can require them to produce these. This is a huge problem. The cordises have four horses, they're not going to probably be able to keep them, it's going to depreciate their land values. The other big concern is the road. I drove that road on Sunday. It's at best a one-lane road, and when you increase the traffic, like they're contemplating, I don't know how the township is going to maintain this. This is the wrong place for an operation of this size. It is not going to be safe, it's going to totally ruin the quality of life in this part of Nicklet County. And under state law, I cited the Wizneski case, it overturned, it reversed a county board that had approved a conditional use permit for a gun range, and the reason, one of the reasons it did it was because the county board had not taken a hard look at the issues. I ask you to do that and deny this permit. Thank you.
So, who wants to go ahead?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tim Golden, and I reside at 46198-561st Avenue in New Ulm. I'd like to start by saying thank you for having me here today. I spoke with all of you on the phone, I appreciate your time you took to speak with me. And I'm also, a bit about myself, I'm an educator in Nicklet County. I teach at Dakota Meadows in North Mankato, and I'm also a vegetable farmer on the opposite side of Nicklet County, near, right near where the gun range has been for the majority of my life. I have grown up listening to trap, I'm used to it, it hasn't bothered me. I'm an avid outdoorsman, enjoy hunting, and I always thought it was a great way to keep people enjoying the outdoors. However, with the addition of this high-power range, there's definitely a major concern from my angle with safety. It's one thing to have shotgun shells that are being shot, you know, a half-mile away, there's no real imminent danger. As opposed to rifles that can be deadly within half-mile or further ranges, depending on the angle of trajectory, definitely a different case scenario. As I mentioned to you on the phone, back in June, there was just a day I was working out in my field, I'm outside every day of the week, it's just how the vegetable life farmer goes. And in which case, it's been very silent this summer, hadn't heard any noise. And one day while I was working, I heard, you know, rapid, what sounded like rifle fire, and I thought, oh, the range is back in action again, glad to hear there's some business happening. But this sounded different. This was not the typical trap I was used to hearing. And I dismissed it, continued working, and as I was finishing my time, I heard what appeared to be a gunshot, I mean, excuse me, a bullet slam into a tree roughly 30 feet from where I was working, followed by the gunshot that was coinciding with it, because as they move faster than the speed of sound. At this point, I was obviously, my concern was greatly heightened. This was not just people shooting randomly over there at targets, this was now my life in danger here. And so, at the time, I contacted my father, who had lived on this property for his, for the past 30 years, I had recently moved out there myself again. At this point, he thought, well, that wouldn't be the range, all they do is shoot trap, that's going to be someone else. So I thought, all right, I'll call the sheriff as soon as, if this continues. And as soon as I finished that phone call, the shooting stopped. And I thought to myself, okay, what am I going to tell authorities? Someone was shooting, I don't know where, and now do something about it? And hindsight, that was the wrong choice. My biggest concern here, obviously, is also not just for myself and my family and my children, I also hired between 15 and 20 youth to help me on my operation during the summer. It's obviously a very major concern if I have employees that are potentially getting gunfire to rain down on them. Now, obviously, with a range, there's always safety precautions put in place, whether there be a berm or what it might be. But what goes up must come down. All it takes is one shot to go over that berm, whatever it's placed at, and it has to land somewhere, whether it be on my property, or beyond me at the quarry, or closer to where the MR, Dick Gimmer pit is happening. So in either case, as it sits with the high powers pointing at my property, I am very, very concerned with that to be happening. I guess I'll leave it with that simple memo of that, of that standpoint. I'd like not to get shot. Thank you for your time.
I mean no disrespect to anyone here, but I do have to leave to go back to work, so thank you for your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tim Plath, I live on Valley View Drive in Cortland. I'm here to represent Minnesota Valley Lutheran High School on Highway 14, I'm the principal there. And while we are not as close to the, the property that Goldens are and, and so on, some of the others are, obviously, there's concern that we would have about the safety of our students. I don't think that the geography of the land around in that area would create any issues or, it would provide backstop or whatever you want to call it for the rifle fire, but I still remain concerned about it, just, and I trust that you too will keep the safety and the welfare of our students and our families and our staff and faculty in mind. Thank you.
Well, you're meeting another Golden. I'm Brenda. I live on the same driveway as Tim, just a few hundred feet from his incident. My address is 46194-561st Avenue. We're inside of a mile from the range, and the berm is facing my house. So, safety is the biggest concern that I have. I can deal with the noise, we've put up with it for years. We have the gravel pit on one side, we have the quarry on the other, we've got dirt that we eat every day, so I'm not concerned about that. I do not want to be shot at. I have lived there for 43 years, and I have never felt unsafe until this week. Now, I'm not sure I'm coming to this late of all the particulars. Is there any documentation that says what's going to happen here? Is it a private, is it public, is it going to be alcohol served, is it going to be ammunition sold? Is there a cap on the ammunition that's going to be used? Is there any kind of inspection data that we can look at? It seems like there's a whole lot of rushing and hushing going on, and I just, I feel that we need to take a step back and make some decisions, but on the high power, or as they call it, center fire, should be left into a tabled situation where we can look at a little closer. I am not against anybody making money, this is his land, their land, they've chose to put this facility on it. I also have, you know, worked in a facility for 43 years and retired now, so I'm home every day and hear everything. Does anybody have any consideration about ricochets? Is there any consideration about containment, or about these neglectful releases? How do we stop them from going, I mean, further? Does the berm have to be more than five feet? I understand that it's supposed to be like 59 inches deep. Also, is there any armor-piercing bullets going to be used, or full metal jacket? I'm not too concerned about the particulars of everything else, but the high power or the center fire is the only thing I have a problem with. Now, just doing some kind of rudimentary studies, I'm wondering, is there any documentation as far as what we can have as a regular person out there on the street, I mean, a neighbor? Can we see what's happening in the future, or is this something that we're not going to be told about? So, the rest of my time I'll give to someone else. Thanks.
Well, you can't really do that, Brenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Valida Cordis. I live at 46882-547th Lane, Cortland. Our lawyer already spoke for us, but I just wanted to bring up a couple of points for you, or reiterate a couple of points. Our concern that the velocity, the amount, the sheer amount of bullets that are going to be shot, as Roger Hippert mentioned, that even if we are looking at only 75 people per day, and only 50 rounds per person, and we all know that you're going to shoot a lot if you're actually paying and going to a place like this, we're looking at almost 4,000 rounds at that point, that we will have to listen to every day. It would be like living next to a war battleground, and that's certainly not what we moved in next to. I have no problem with the clay range, I have a problem with the rifle and shotguns pointing our direction, the rifle too close to us, the amount of sound from that, as well as safety. I do have the four horses. This can cause them stress-related ulcers and colic. Colic is the leading cause of death in horses, and I'm not okay with my horses having that kind of a health risk. If this passes through with everything that it has, we are going to be forced to move from our property, and I don't believe that they should be able to take our property rights away, just to make their money. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
Hi, this is Joe Mikelets, 41474 Judson Bottom Road, North Mankato. You know, we've, we really care about doing this project, right? We have spent a lot of time and money working with engineers, working by the, using the NRA guidelines. You know, the goal is to manage noise. First of all, we want everything to be safe, there will be no projectiles that leave the property. I'm not, I don't know how this incident with the gardener, it makes no sense to me. We use the rifle range personally, and we have a 30-foot embankment in the back, and behind that is a, is a gravel pit. And if you were to see it, you probably would never see a safer rifle range. I'm, I'm confident that there's no way for any bullets to go over that embankment, and if they did, they are going into a gravel pit. As far as the distance, you know, the, where the, where the shooting house is for the rifle range, it's way more than 500 feet from the cordises corral. And it's been measured a couple of times, and, and we had a couple of people from the zoning commission come out just to look at everything and make sure everything is proper. And we've been working with the DNR, we've been working with other individuals who are experts in 87A and the protections that are given to shooting ranges. So, safety's number one, noise is number two. We will be doing whatever we need to do with noise professionals that we plan to have come out. It's part of the condition on the, on the conditional use permit is a environmental stewardship plan, which we will be putting together, and we will make sure that all of the noise is within the noise standards allowed, allowed by 87A. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
My name is David Sturing, 430 Ziski Road, Cortland. I'm the neighbor to the south, own the property to the south. I've lived there for 57 years, owned the property for 40 years. Likewise, safety is my main concern. Starting out with the pistol range, the pistol target range, as I can determine from the satellite photo, is 53 yards from our property. The shooting spot, 146 yards. Knowing the inaccuracy of pistols and how easily they can overshoot a berm as proposed, that risk is very great for us. If a berm is foolproof, why cannot the shooting be done northerly instead of southerly towards our property? We should not have to bear the risk of overshooting the berm. Then we go to the trap and archery. They, their shooting is toward the northerly direction, away from our property. However, I cannot see how people approaching to or exiting from their shooting station will always have their loaded guns and cocked bows pointed north as they approach or leave their shooting station. Then there's the matter of enforcement. Will there be adequate personnel to monitor and regulate all the things that are going on? The road speed? Trespassing onto neighboring property? Dropping litter for the wind to blow onto neighboring property? And the unsafe handling of guns and bows? Now, on paper, all these things have been addressed, they look good, but in reality, experience has shown that it just does not happen that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Christine Mikelets, 41474 Judson Bottom Road. Thank you, I know that there has been a lot of information presented, and so I thank you, and first of all, just for your time in meticulously reviewing all of the information. There have been a lot of, a lot of facts presented, a lot of misinformation presented. So, I do want to just reiterate a few things, address a few things that have been brought up today, particularly. Talking about the volume of shooters, our, our proposed plan did include a projection of volume, and we had to do that to give some idea of, of what a day at the range might look like on one of the heavier days. We would not want to apply for fewer shooters, only to find that we may have an organized shoot of sporting clays, along with a few shooters coming out to the trap fields. The sporting clays, 14 stations, oftentimes with an organized shoot there, you might have 40 shooters coming out for an afternoon for a fundraising event or a corporate event. The trap fields would include four fields with five shooters each, that's 20 shooters right there. So, by far, the, the highest projection of shooting activity that we would anticipate would definitely be with the shotgun activity, which we already have the permit approved for. The, the rifle range, right now, includes four shooting benches, and our plan would be that that is reserved by the hour. So it would be a very controlled situation. We've got the, the very high backstop earthen berm at the end, we've got backstops along the way at shorter distances. Rifle shooting, you know, hunting is a, is a strong tradition in southern Minnesota, and hunters are challenged finding a place to sighten rifles. If they're lucky, they can find a gravel pit or some public land that they can go shoot their guns. By bringing this rifle range into our business operations, we believe it, it actually increases safety, it would be operating under the, the safety and performance standards of the entire range. Same with the pistol range. The direction of shooting for a proposed pistol range does shoot toward the south because that's where the roads are. There wouldn't be a way to incorporate a road and keep our shooters, our customers, and the neighbors safe. Information has been presented regarding the, the horse corral and the distance to the range. The horses have been there for a while. The cordises bought that property in 2015, decades after the shooting club was in existence, and they deliberately placed horses right next door to a gun club. With our proposed increase in activity, we will be responsible for doing the noise testing for the rifle and the pistol shooting. And if we can't keep that sound in a compliant range, we understand the consequences of I know there are concerns about road traffic. We will be working with the township on that. It's, we're limited in how much we can regulate it, but again, we're, we're happy to do what we can, if increased signage would help keep the traffic down. You know, we definitely want to be neighborly, we want to be agreeable, we want to keep people safe, we want to operate this under high standards.
Since I didn't use all my time, can I ask one question? Is there a cap on the caliber?
Is there a cap on?
Is there a high, what's the highest range caliber that's going to be shot in the rifle range?
Well, we certainly aren't going to let anything above normal hunting calibers be shot, and we're not going to allow 50 caliber, we're not going to allow steel jacketed bullets, anything like that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Trader, 45318-551st Avenue, Cortland. I'm a Cortland Township Supervisor. In attendance with me is Larry Lipke, also fellow supervisor. From a township standpoint, we realize that road is not in the best shape right now. We have gotten bids to upgrade and improve that road. At this time, we have not accepted any bids because we've run into some, to some issues with where the water's going to go when it runs down that hill. Mr. Hippert pointed out the road is not wide, that is our, our thoughts as well, meaning cars on wet conditions could be pretty ugly with the current state of the road. The applicants have applied dust control, and that's something that we would like to see as, as well as speed restrictions that would also like to be enforced if, if things are approved. But from a township standpoint, we feel the road needs some work, and at this time, no bids have been accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for the record, has there been action taken by the township for those comments, or are those your individual comments as a township supervisor?
We've discussed it at our township meeting.
Okay.
I guess, I, Larry was at the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, twice, I believe.
Okay.
But yeah, that's the township supervisors.
But no formal vote has been taken on the position?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, your last chance, once they close it, you're out of luck. Yeah, public appearances are over.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am going to briefly summarize the application request, but do want to note that at your seat, you did receive a copy of pages seven and eight of the proposed plans, a copy of the conditions that are recommended for approval, with the attachment to the conditional use permit, and also some additional information received after the planning and zoning meeting of July 20th, and including, and I will go through that information as I go through my presentation, but I just want to note that there are additional documents that I will be referring to as I make statements regarding the request. Initially, this was held before the Planning and Zoning Advisory Commission on June 15th. It was quite a significant amount of discussion during this meeting, and what ended up, the planning commission recommended to continue the meeting to the July 20th meeting to allow staff to gather some additional information regarding noise. We did do that, and it is referenced within here, but I just want to go over the basic application at this time to get a better sense of what is being requested by the applicants. Yes. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So as was noted, this was originally permitted in 1993 as a shooting and trap range. In 2005, there was an amendment to allow camping and some other small changes to the operation.
use permit as a hunting and shooting range, camp shooting range, to include trap, long-range rifle, short-range pistol, shooting clays, pistol target range, and an outdoor archery range at the facility. The amendment will also remove conditions five E, six, seven, eight, and nine from conditional use permit, see twenty-six oh five, which is the two thousand and five amendment, and remove condition five from the conditional use permit of nineteen ninety-three. And those are in reference to the operation of the facility and specifically to the prohibition of rifle and pistols on site. With that being said, currently, the site is allowed to operate as a trap field, sporting clays, and both of those are with the use of shotguns, guide dog services, game birds as a hunting preserve, camping, and then shooting-related activities such as shooting events and alcohol sales. What they are proposing to do is to continue with the trap in the sporting clay fields with shotguns, to include long-range rifle, short-range pistol, target pistol, outdoor archery, and then the additional shooting-related activities such as the shooting events, alcohol sales, which includes the bar lounge, retail sales, and a pro shop, classroom trainings, indoor shooting simulator, and a gunsmith archery services. There are schematics that are located within your packet that are also available on the website for as far as the layout of the proposed clubhouse. This operation or amendment, excuse me, will also include a carriage house for the on-site operator, manager, so that will be someone out there essentially twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That is located south of the proposed clubhouse. As was mentioned previously, when a conditional use permit goes through, we request that the applicant plan for the fullest, highest use of the activity. With that being said, they anticipate three-to-large events a year, which may include three hundred to five hundred people. This will include competitions, tournaments, or vendor demonstrations, and then there'll be several smaller events also during the year, which may be up to forty people, including corporate or fundraising shooting events, although they not expected to exceed a hundred and fifty people during these events. To clarify the alcohol sales, previously, the site was permitted to serve three point two alcohol. When the property exchanged hands, the state license expired, which took effect in twenty nineteen. Currently, they cannot serve alcohol on-site. To allow them to serve alcohol going forward, they are required to obtain a permit from the state of Minnesota. They go through the license requirements at that time, and then it's forward to the county to go through our process. Any subsequent renewals, the county then takes forward and brings that through the process.
Is that over here, Mandy?
Correct. That is my understanding. As far as the noise, there is some, several concern comments made referencing that. The Niklet County zoning ordinance does not have any noise standards. We would then refer to chapter seventy thirty of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, which is the enforcing agency when it comes to noise complaints. In regard to the reason for the continuance of the June fifteenth meeting to the July twentieth, the Planning Commission requested staff investigate who regulates the noise complaints and noise in general, how it is measured, who measures it, and where it's measured from. You'll notice within your packet, there is additional information from DNR Chuck Niska, the shooting range coordinator, and referencing all the specific on that information regarding noise and how it is measured, who regulates it, who measures it, and where it's measured I do want to reference several of the people you heard today, also were in attendance both in June and July. We did receive several written documents that have been incorporated within to the packet. Most recently, for the July meeting, we did receive information from Valida and Wade Cordis, which references a map, and then also a letter from David M. Gross, co-author of chapter eighty-seven, or, excuse me, eighty-seven A, the Shooting Range Protection Act. And those, as I said, are in your packet currently. They do not, are not included in the stuff that I just provided to you. I just want to note the people that did testify included Mr. and Mrs. Cordis, David Josiah and Emily Sturine, Gary Zamansky, Larry Lipke from the township. And then also, I do want to note, I mean, you did hear from her this morning, but also Brenda Golden did leave a message last night with her concerns that she related today The items that I would like to go through are regarding the new information that you And I will start with the email packets that are labeled attachment O. And it looks like this document that's stapled together. And attachment O references a corral. During the review of the request in relation to the adjacent properties, staff went through and did some basic measurements using our aerial photography to verify that we had compliance with it. In this July twenty-second email, there's reference to a corral that's approximately three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred feet. During our staff review of that, staff could not verify that a corral existed. We also confirmed that the assessor's office did not have record of this corral, nor did the, our office property services issue a permit for that. If this was not a structure that required a permit, because it would house animals, our feedlot officer would be involved to review to make sure that there is no potential for pollution based on the animal housing area and the approximate area that could be located. I do want to mention, if you refer to the second area that I received that's identified as the overall existing grading plan with number H, it's somewhat difficult to see, but I believe you can see it on the TV screens much better. The area is in orange with the tight lines. That indicates that there's steep slope or specifically slope that's over twelve percent. So if a permit were to be requested for this type of activity in that area, a permit would be denied because it would not meet the setbacks and also be significant concern regarding the slope and the potential from runoff from a animal housing area. Then there also, I'd like to mention, within that attachment O, there are also two additional emails with that from Valida Cordis also dated July twenty-third, and then another one at a later time, also on July twenty-third. There is also attachment R within your packet from Christine Michaelitz dated July twenty-fifth, referencing some misinformation that has been going around in the area and trying to clear that up, which also has an attachment of a article that ran in the New Ulm Journal on July twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty that you also have a copy, and that's part of the record. Most recently, we received some information last night that you also have a copy and hopefully had a chance to review. These are titled attachment S one, and there are six of them. S one is the letter from Roger Hippard, who spoke earlier today and summarized his comments. You also have attachment S two, which was submitted by Roger Hippard, which all these documents identified as S are submitted from Roger Hippard, is the NRA ammunition maximum range. It's a two-page document. The first page references the maximum range yardage, and then it goes on to the backside referencing the revolver and rifle caliber. Attachment S three is from Dr. Dana Hirsch, a veterinarian at the Saint James Veterinary Clinic, in regard to concern for high-powered rifles in relation to the horses and the adjacent property. S four is from Jason, and I believe it's Rubik. He's a horsemanship out of Springbrook, Wisconsin, and he submitted an email stating his concern with the proximity of the rifle range to the horse corrals. And then also, two additional documents identified as S five, which is a court of appeals decision dated December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and hopefully I'm stating that correctly for the record, and also a attachment S six, another court of appeals decision dated September fifth, two thousand and seventeen. To go back to the corral location, which was identified in the attachment O emails, staff, based on our best estimate on the information that we have available, it is approximately four hundred and ninety-four, somewhere around five hundred feet, but without a survey to identify the specific location, we are unsure of that actual distance. Regarding noise, as I mentioned before, chapter seventy thirty, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is the enforcing agency for that. So if we did receive noise complaints within our office, we would refer those noise complaints to the state for their enforcement. And also the alcohol, I think there's been some serious or significant concern about the alcohol sales. As I mentioned previously, the site was allowed to serve alcohol. The license has expired, and they are required to go through the process as if it was a new site, essentially what it is with it. That is the general information with that. Planning and zoning did have their initial meeting on June fifteenth, which was several hours. They continued to the July twentieth hearing, where several discussion points were raised. Also want to note that, as mentioned before, three of the planning commissioners did attend and view the site, Chair Jason Enter and members Justin Laven and also Ron Regenshade. You'll notice within the minutes, Ron Regenshade did do some additional research, contacting the Caribou Gun Club and then adjacent neighbors to discuss their points and concerns that they've had, living in close proximity to the Caribou Gun Club. After that visit, the commission and those three individuals had a better sense of what the site was going to look like, although they can look at the paper once you walk out on-site and see the directions and how it is set up. They felt comfortable moving forward with the recommendation of approval with the attached conditions. And I do want to note, there are several conditions proposed. There are thirty-five of them, with several that have been carried over from the ninety-three and two thousand and five conditional use permits. So just to summarize that up, the Planning Commission did recommend approval with the attached conditions, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Well, I'll start with a question. If Mr. Golden would have been aware of this, you think that would have changed things that define his own view?
I reviewed the individuals that were required to be notified by state statute. That's a quarter of a mile or ten or more property owners. We exceeded both requirements of state statute. They were listed on the mailing list, and we do have verification that a letter went out. I can't comment on that, but that would be additional information the Planning Commission would have been interested in.
Mr. Chair, if we could look at proposed site plan number seven, it would just help me, there are a number of properties along the road there, and we've heard from a number of people, just wondering if you could identify any of these residences as being from the folks. For example, I don't know where Mr. Golden lives or the Cordises.
Correct. The Goldens are not on map number seven. If you look down, the first property, the southern property, are where the Cordises, Wade and Valida live, and then just to the north of it is Gary Zamansky. And then the intersection of US fourteen and the Township Road, this is the Coen Properties up in the northern section of that. Unfortunately, this does not indicate where the Sturins live, but they are south of the properties.
Jerry, Mr. Golden is maybe about three quarters mile south of MBL. Is that pretty close right there?
I'm a half mile.
You're a half mile?
And we're just west of Gimmer Creek.
More questions? Just Jack.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Because I don't know the answer to the question of future availability and consumption of alcoholic beverages and its impact on improving or diminishing the accuracy of a shooter's ability to hit a target, I might be interested in proposing a condition on the use permit that future customers not consume alcohol before shooting at the proposed range as a thirty-seventh condition. I think I called it thirty-six before. So I would like to at least introduce the idea that we propose a condition on the use permit that future customers not consume alcohol before shooting at this proposed I introduce that for discussion, Mr. Chair.
Of course, one thing, Jack, they might stop at the bar before they go there.
I can't control that. It's the use of the property.
Yes.
And I might ask if that is a fair question to ask Tony Attorney, ma'am?
Mr. Commissioner, you could propose any additional amendments that you would like for conditions.
Mr. Chair, on the long line, would you please look at condition ten?
I didn't see that, but Jerry, it doesn't address what I was asking about to say that there'd be a rule or condition.
Yeah. I'm good, I'm sorry, I'm good with that. I have, actually, I'd like to ask a question and build on what you're.
Thank you, Chair.
Mandy, the condition ten says the applicant must acquire the licenses and permits necessary. I assume they can choose not to serve alcohol.
Correct. But based on their proposal, they would like to, therefore, staff is requesting some type of confirmation that they've done all the appropriate permitting with the state and also with Brown-Niklet Environmental Health.
Any more discussion about that subject? Could I ask Tony Attorney a question? There were several things listed in Mr. Hippard's letter. Is that anything of those that we should be concerned about at this time?
Is there, I mean, there's a lot in the letter, so it's difficult to generally state that.
Well, about a board being overturned somewhere and, you know, other things.
There is the one decision that he included. There is equally a decision, an unpublished decision of, in the matter of the application of Park Rapids Clay Dusters, Inc., that called out the interpretation of the decision that he put in his letter about requiring the noise permit or the noise investigation. I would also suggest that the statement that the development within seven hundred and fifty, let me just find it here for a moment, eighty-seven eight point zero four, talking about the mitigation area being within the seven hundred and fifty feet of the perimeter. If you look at both the language and the statute as well. Um, if you look at both the language and the statute as well as the, let me get the document accurate. The Minnesota Shooting Range Protection Act, there's a, um, FAQ that was done by the House Research Bill Summary, um, of the two thousand and five, chapter one oh five, um, that was published, um, a revised nine twenty-one of two thousand and five clarifies that that seven hundred and fifty feet development is development that is outside the perimeter of the shooting range, not seven hundred and fifty feet development within the perimeter of the shooting range. So I disagree with the, the proposal that Mr. Hipper put forward, and I clarified that with him before the meeting. But both, I interpret the language of the statute as well as the FAQ state that they're talking about development outside the shooting range, um, not inside the shooting range itself.
Thank you. More questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Chair.
I just have a, a question in, I believe, the application material. There was pretty significant discussion about lead remediation with regard to, and was there a reference or a conditional component that included that as part of the conditional use? If there was, I'm, I'm missing it, so I just asking for clarification on that. Was it number twelve? I understand that, but that's lead shot only. I'm talking about lead remediation with regard to long guns and pistol fire. And that, that's the part I didn't see. I didn't think I saw, so if it's not clear, I'm, I'm just asking for that.
Number sixteen.
Correct. Number sixteen references the Environmental Stewardship Plan, which would include all the remediation.
Part of the original app, right? Okay. I was not connecting that, Dot. I apologize for being, but I just wanted to make sure that that was a, uh, component. Thank you.
It's difficult for the applicant to submit something now without knowing.
I, I absolutely understand that. I, and, and I understand that this was a broad brush at, at making that happen, so, and that's fine. It's just that I didn't, the only thing that I focused on was the lead shot issue and it didn't include all of it, so that's why. Thank you.
Mandy, your question I have is, uh, Mr. Sturian's concerns about the pistol range. Do you guys consider that safe for him working in his field?
Based on what the applicant has provided and the construction of a twelve-foot-high berm, it appears to be in line with the NRA guidance.
Well, Mr. Chair, Mandy, just to clarify, the NRA guidance is the guidance that statutorily we are to apply, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I might then, just a couple of things, I, thanks, Mandy, for providing some responses. We've heard a few things about noise and who's responsible for measuring noise. And I thought I heard, uh, Mr. McGlitz at one point say, we're responsible for monitoring noise, but I'm not sure that that's the case. So I just, I'd like to understand who's responsible for monitoring the noise.
In the event that our office receives a noise complaint, we would, of course, investigate and try to do our best on, to pinpoint the specific date in the events that were taking place. Our call then would be to the state, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and speak with them regarding the complaint and how to go about it with it. Um, I think some of that information may come out as the state directs us how to handle those noise complaints. But, yes, there is, it's a combination of both the state agency directing it. Um, from previous conversations with them many years ago, there are limited staff within that office and that they do allow the equipment to be loaned out. Um, staff has chosen not to take on that responsibility because we are not trained professionally in that area to use the equipment. And so therefore, a separate private entity would be requested to come in to monitor and verify the noise and make sure that it meets state decibel levels. That would be on the individual, um, based on our previous experiences, would be the individual that the noise complaint was against. And that's just based on previous, um, experiences. As was stated, um, if there is a noise complaint, we, and the facility does need to be within the parameters set by state guidance or state, um, requirements.
If I might, Mr. Chair. Uh, item nine talks about five special events a year. And I'm just not sure what a special event is, other than it has a maximum of attendance of five hundred people.
It would be a larger event, um, based on the proposal that was submitted. It, those events would range from three to five hundred people. Um, it would be, uh, something that would be required special signage, as noted as one of the conditions, working with MINDA to verify that there's an event with it. But it'd be a large shooting event, such as a tournament, something where it draw in, like, drawing national attention.
So this doesn't limit just the daily attendance to five hundred, does it?
The condition is specific to the special events.
More questions?
Well, just clarification, if I missed, Mr. Chair, questions that were brought up, because I think everyone in the pub comment period, if they had something, I might ask about it. Um, so Mr. Golden had to leave, but he talked about a bullet in June. Have we heard any other concerns or complaints about rifle fire?
It is my understanding, and I don't have a specific date, um, maybe the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands. There was some concern of, and I don't recall if it was a rifle, that may have, um, crossed property lines to the south. Otherwise, I'm not aware of anything else. Um, there is reference to in one of the, um, emails most recently, that there has been bullets going to the east, across the east property lines. But we have no confirmation of when those events took place.
Mr. Chair, just one more. Item twenty-five talks about a satisfactory road agreement shall be in place. I, uh, between the applicant and Cortland Township. I assume this, at least it is about the subject matter that we heard from the one township supervisor today.
Correct. Um, this is a typical condition that we put on with our larger fee lots, that we require to have some type of agreement in place between the landowner and the road authority. Typically, they are gravel roads and they are not used to the amount of traffic or the weight of the traffic. And so this is the condition that we put on that allows the applicant and the township to come to a resolution with it. If we do not have that agreement within our office, we cannot issue the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
There's been some discussions, but nothing official.
May I can, just to bolt on to that question, who determines the satisfaction?
That is left up to the applicant and the township.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, that, that sounds like rhetoric, but I, it's, if we have a unreconcilable choice between the property owner and the township, is there a tiebreaker or where's that mechanism fall into that?
Staff has chosen to use that language because it really is between the applicant and the landowner. And we do not get involved in the monetary part of it. And so we request that there is a satisfactory agreement that's provided to our office to ensure that there's been conversations specifically addressing the dust control and bringing in a material for it. And in the past, um, the townships have, and the applicants have been able to resolve those issues, issues quite quickly and have submitted an, uh, an agreement to our office.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. I apologize, members. I do have, I think, one more question. I think that maybe Mr. McGlitz had talked about potential limitation of types of ammunition that might be used. I think there was an exchange that occurred here. In the proposal, is there a limitation on the type of ammunition to be used?
No, there is no condition specific to the type of ammunition related to the rifle range.
I'm left to wonder whether that would be an appropriate condition, given the exchange we heard.
What else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Chair.
To how many, what Ms. Remora was talking about, maybe the proponents of this might offer an idea for a limit to those size of, of ammunition.
I believe he actually did. Did he say something about fifty caliber?
Or he could condition it. Terry said there was no condition, so.
We're certainly happy to limit, um, to, you know, the, the ammunition size. Nothing to exceed, you know, the, the largest caliber that people hunt with would be a three thirty-eight. And, um, again, we don't want a fifty caliber shot on our range. And, uh, we certainly don't want, um, any steel metal jacket that are steel type, armor piercing type ammunition shot at the range. So we, you know, if it helps to put a restriction on that, uh, we're happy to do that, because we're not going to allow it.
Actually, as long as we have you conversation, what is the range on a, say, a thirty-odd second?
Well, um.
Two miles?
No, if it, it, it can go, did you say two miles? It actually could go farther than that, I believe, if, if it was shot, you know, you know, at an angle high. But our range is a thousand yards. And, uh, the, the bullets are already dropping over twenty feet to get to the, uh, to that backstop. The backstop is thirty feet high. And, um, um, and again, i- i- if, if something happened to go over the backstop, it's going into a, a gravel pit. But we don't perceive anything ever going over the backstop. It was made to make sure that doesn't happen.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I've just wondered whether I have left confusion by asking about the ammunition limit.
Jack, what I thought I heard was the proponent is willing to make a limit if we provide a condition for him to make that one.
Okay.
And if we consider that condition alongside the condition that I was earlier proposing, we'd have thirty-seven, thirty-eight as numbers of conditions. And with that, Mr. Chair, because I think we've dealt with the safety and the noise and the alcohol and the road issues. And it feels like this proposal and these folks want to create a situation which is safe, which will provide a service. I'll move approval with the conditions that were stated. Mandy took care of one of those conditions about the size of the, size of the shot. And I think I heard Mr. McGlitz say three thirty-eight, I mean, I don't, I don't do ammunition. And then the other one would say, uh, propose a condition on the use permit that future customers not consume alcohol before shooting at the proposed range because, as I mentioned earlier, I don't know if the availability and consumption of, uh, alcoholic beverages improves or diminishes the accuracy of a shooter's ability to hit a target. I think I know the answer. I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I just leave it at that. So that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion. There is a second? Okay, that died. So I would like to.
I think we should call for it again, though, just to make sure that it's dead.
Is there a second?
I, I have a couple of procedural questions and I'm not sure how to fit this into the sequence. So I'm going to look to my county attorney for process here. And, um, before I would render a vote, I'd like these recommended changes presented as a complete document. I would feel more comfortable about that because I think there's some language here that needs to be tuned. And is that a process or is that a finding issue because, and, and I'm not sure of the process. So I, I feign complete ignorance on the best way to proceed with this. It's procedural more so, and I'm not necessarily adverse to the content, but I, I need to know that. Terry, am I, am I muddy on that or?
Well, if I might, Mr. Chair, what I understand is that we have three options today. We can approve the conditional use permit with the recommendations, or with the conditions recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, without changing them to accept that, those thirty-six. Uh, their second option is we could approve the conditional use permit with modifications or alterations to the conditions recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I think both Commissioner Colars and I have suggested modifications, additions to those conditions. And the third of the three options we have is to deny the conditional use permit. We have to take some action, some final type of action. I believe it's before, maybe on or before September eleventh. I don't know, Commissioner, whether that, whether the best course of action is to come back with language on perhaps the two conditions that Commissioner Colars and I mentioned. I'm, I believe I'm comfortable that the two modifications we were suggesting are relatively clear. Uh, but I'm certainly happy to discuss them if I've left a lack of clarity. So I'd be comfortable with the second of the three options if the board were inclined to determine the matter one way or another.
So I don't know if we can make this a modification or not, but I would sure like McGlitz to work with David Sturian to give him a little more comfort in working in this field with the pistol range and the, uh, archery.
I think that steps beyond our ability.
And, Mr. Chair, with respect, or to Commissioner Kemp's concerns, I understand, what I hearing you say is you would like to actually see the language.
Yes.
What I would suggest is that we would, my request would be that there be direction to prepare the findings, which would include the conditions. And so the clarification of Commissioner Colar's motion would be, what I heard him say is that to approve the conditions recommended by Planning and Zoning, to add a condition that there would be no alcohol consumption on-site prior to or presumably during shooting activities by that individual, that shooter. And second, that there is a limitation of the type of ammunition that will be shot, which what I heard him incorporate is nothing, and I'm going to show my ignorance on ammunition, so if I mistake that, forgive me. That there's a limit of the three thirty-eight and no steel armor piercing ammunition.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I, there might be some calibers that people use for hunting that, that might be greater than three thirty-eight. But there's certainly, um, people are going to, I would just like to limit it, no, no fifty calibers or larger.
So, so then that would be up to Commissioner Colars to clarify his motion as to what limitation you're proposing in your motion. Then it could be considered for the second, then we would come back and that, that language would be further clarified and articulated in the conditions and findings.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just point out that most hunting rifles do not exceed point three nine caliber. So thirty caliber range is, is the standard hunting rifle. Anything greater than point three nine is typically not used for hunting. So I would suggest, um, just to account for various options that might be out there for people participating out there, that's the, the modification be up to point three nine caliber.
Brian, aren't muzzleloaders greater than that?
Uh, muzzleloaders are fifty caliber, and I guess I'm not sure how that would be treated if you're planning.
It could be, you know, an exception, yeah, maybe an exception for muzzleloaders because they're forty-five and fifty caliber, but they're not.
But they're not high velocity.
They're not nearly that high velocity.
So again, I, I, I go back to, there's some semantics here that I think need to be worked out. I'm, again, I'm not drastically opposed here, but I'd really like to see this in a very definitive way. And that's, that's my reticence to just do a carte blanche vote. So that's where I'm at right now.
So I kind of have an idea. And I don't know if it's good or not, and that is to grant everything except. And I don't know if it's good or not, and that is to grant everything except the rifle range. And you come back a year from now, and if you've been a good neighbor to your neighbors, do reconsider it.
Well, that's modifying Commissioner Colars. Right now, there's a motion on the floor that we have to address.
In two minutes, it hasn't, it hasn't been seconded yet.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Um, I think what we need to remember here is this is changing an existing conditional use permit. And we can't change zoning, for those of you in the audience, if we can't change zoning because it doesn't fit your perception of what our zoning is. I have also some concerns about no serving of the alcohol, because how can you police that? That's difficult to police. Other than that, I had no trouble with the other conditions at this point.
Will we have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Well, under discussion to address Commissioner Drantle's point, would seem to me that good operators of a good operation are not going to allow people to be drinking and then go shoot from somewhere. Something bad could happen, correct? Would be my, my thought, so I don't know, I think we'd have to rely more on the operators to enforce that. I, I, I hope that that would, that's how I would see that now.
I just think it's gonna be difficult to police. I don't care if you're the operator or part of the condition, you're not one-on-one staff, you're person at the watch, you want to approach the facility.
That's right.
Well, are you getting ready to call the question, or?
No.
Okay, 'cause I, the motion's on the table, I just wanna make sure everybody understands what the motion is, that there's still discussion, so.
Still discussion, and I'd like to amend the motion. As I stated previously, that we approve everything except deny the long-range rifle and let them come back after a period of time to ask for that.
Okay, so if, just parliamentary procedure, we've got a motion to amend, that also requires a second?
Yes, it does.
And we would be voting on the motion to amend if it's seconded?
Yes. I believe there's not a second.
I, 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 well, I can't discuss it right now because it's not open for discussion, technically, so I ask.
Well, I guess I, my motion died, or my amendment died for a lack of a second.
So we'd be back to the original motion?
Yes. Any more discussion on that?
I, I have procedural question again, sorry. Are we doing this merely on the recommended changes, are we setting a standard here, or are we documenting this before we do a final vote? Sorry, I'm thick today. And I, I guess I'm looking at you, Madam County Attorney.
So, what I understand the motion to be from Commissioner Colars is to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions imposed by the Planning and Zoning, with the additional condition of no service of alcohol on sight to individuals before they shoot or while shooting. And the second condition would be no rifle caliber larger than point three nine caliber. That's what I understand the motion that was made and seconded by Commissioner Drantle for motion. Again, if that is approved, my recommendation would be that we come back for specific findings and specific language of those conditions that you would then vote on adopting that specific language and findings.
So, Mr. Chair, since that advances today, that would be recommended to the addition, to all the conditions and come back at our August whatever meeting?
And then you would have the opportunity then to tweak or to modify the proposed conditions that staff come up with that support the decision.
Correct.
It's not an opportunity to come back and change your mind on the, on the permit itself, but it's to modify the language that would be-
So it addresses Commissioner Kemp's concern about making sure that it's all in front of us before we finally vote on it, but moves this forward, correct?
That would be my, my recommendation, correct.
More discussion, Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, we'll also be directing staff to prepare findings, do you want that as a separate motion?
After, yes, after, after it's approved, correct.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if the motion should include something about muzzle loaders as well?
Because they are forty- That's where I was going to go with that.
They are forty-five and, so, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, black powder muzzle loaders, both modern and traditional, are forty-five and fifty caliber typically. Um, their distance is not real far, I don't know what it is, let's say a couple hundred yards. Um, I, I would recommend that the motion maybe include a provision for that.
So black powder with a maximum of fifty caliber?
Correct.
And is there a variation in smooth war versus rifled war?
There's a, yeah, there's a lot of variations.
Because that does impact the distance. Is, is my only, my only question, and I'm, and I'm not trying to be henny-penny about this, but I think there needs to be a clearly definable set of parameters. And I think the original discussion was, and what I thought I heard was the issue, we didn't want a fifty caliber Barrett sitting out there and having those types of things, but there's a whole lot of stuff that I don't think we can use just caliber as the determining factor. And so I would argue that some of that needs to get called out. And if every one of my peers is comfortable with being able to call that out as part of the findings, I am fine with that, and I would then probably support this measure. But I just wanna be sure that I'm on the same page as everyone else is. Is that clear as mud? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Kemp was a law enforcement officer, so he probably knows more about that than me.
Well, I'm just, it, it's, it's not, it's about doing the right thing so everybody knows what the rules are before we start this venture. And I think that's fair to everyone, including the petitioner, but also to the citizens that are surrounded by this. That being said, I'll call the question then. No, we have, we have-
Well, I, the, the, procedurally, the motion is on the floor, as I understood it to be Commissioner Colars. I don't know that what you're asking for is part of his motion, so we'd have to go back to the amendment of his motion to allow for that expansion.
May I?
Please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm sensing that we have a generalized understanding of what we're trying to do with regard to ammunition. I understand from Commissioner Kemp that we may try to fine-tune and fine-tune that today and still realize we missed something. And I think if I understand correctly, Commissioner Kemp, that staff can prepare a condition along the lines that we've been discussing, and that's in Commissioner Colars' motion. The findings can come back to us. We can't change conditions, but we can modify if we say, oh, shoot, we forgot to address this type of ammunition. Or that type of ammunition, that that would be a permissible step. We can't create new conditions. And maybe there's a definitional problem there with muzzle-loading guns or what have you. Ryan, you look like you may have a solution.
I, I guess, I, I agree to your point, if we had the flexibility later on to define in the final findings, the caliber restriction, um, I would recommend going that route rather than trying to pin it down today. But I'm not, I'll look to the county attorney if we have that option, or does it have to be specified in the motion today?
I think it has to be specified in the motion today. Because otherwise, you're changing what your motion could be.
And that was, that's my concern. And so I don't, for those who are procedural walks, uh, might have a better approach at this.
So he should restate his motion, or?
Ri- right, so presently before the board, procedurally, there's a motion made and seconded with discussion. Commissioner Kemp is asking for an amendment to the motion, so you have to act on that. You have, you'd have to make the motion to amend, and then there would have to be a second. And I'm wondering-
And I, and then I need some assistance from my peers on language.
What were you wondering?
I think we all know where I'm trying to go with this, it's just I don't know the best way to get there. Because I do think that there needs to be some flexibility, and it's research that we can't agree upon at this moment, at this time.
My, part of my reluctance is that I do not have the knowledge of ammunition and firearms that you do, and so any-
Well, and, and that's, and that's the point, I think it's, it's one of those things that we have to find a way to reach some-
So, so when you, when you're looking at me for that suggestion, I don't have that knowledge?
No, it's not so much that, I'm, I'm asking for, can I, can I make the amendment to be a bit more open-ended until we've gathered the research, or does it have to be that specific right at this moment? That's my question, and, or do I suggest then that we fail the motion procedurally? And continue this to our next meeting? And I don't know procedurally if I can do that, we could still, and that's, that's my question.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, sir.
So you're, you had the specific matter of the muzzle loading?
Muzzle and also clarification on the jacketed rifle rounds. I, I think we're pretty close to where that needs to be, I think that's pretty articulable. But my concern is if we are going to make this a regulatory, a regulated component, we need to be very specific about this. And I'm sorry, I'm getting caught up in process, but, uh, this is a tough bell to unring later. And that's my concern about doing it as right as we can now.
Mr. Chair, I, I believe the motion did not include specific restrictions on full metal jackets and that type of thing, is that correct? I think we just had the word from the applicant on that, so I think you're alluding that you maybe want that in, it is part of the condition as well?
Yes.
So, this does present a lot of variables on proper language. Um, and if the county attorney feels that we should have the exact language in place with the motion, it might be the best to continue this forward so that language could be, be prepared, I will look to the county attorney to-
There's a motion on the floor at this point, and if you deny it, that raises procedural issues about coming back on, on it. Before I, I'm gonna just consult with Commissioner, or with, uh, Mr. Crusher for just a minute.
Yes.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Come back at ten thirty. Okay, resume the meeting? Mr. Kemp, do you have a floor?
I don't think I have a floor, I don't.
Thank you, I just wanted to look for a date. Mr. Chair, would I, to accommodate both Commissioner Kemp's concerns as well as comments that were made um, by individuals during the public appearances section, um, I might suggest to Commissioner Colars that, um, his motion, as I understand it to be, to approve the conditions recommended by Planning and Zoning with the, um, additional condition of no service of alcohol on sight to individuals while they shoot or before they shoot. And that the other condition regarding ammunition and, um, be modified as follows, that there be a limit of thirty-nine caliber rifles, and that you further direct more specialized research on the type of ammunition to be used and allowing black powder type guns, um, over thirty, uh, point three nine caliber to be utilized for specific language to be considered at the next meeting. So, the only issue that you're reserving to the next meeting is further clarification on the limitations that Commissioner Kemp would like to be considered. So if, if that is acceptable to you as the movement, you would agree to that amendment. Commissioner Drantle, as the person who seconded that motion, would a- a- also have to agree. There would be additional discussion and then action on that motion.
Madam County Attorney, is there a requirement for liability insurance?
Mr. Chair, could we stick just to this question for a moment? Because, let's hear from Commissioners Colars and Drantle.
Madam Attorney, when would our, when would we address this next?
So my recommendation would be, because unfortunately I will not be here for the next meeting, would be to, um, do it on August twenty-fifth, which I believe is our next meeting. So we would then come back. That's what I would ask you to move after this issue is decided, for specific findings, as well as then consideration of the specific limitations that Commissioner Kemp is concerned about. So there'd be two parts of that action.
I heard you say August twenty-fifth?
Isn't-
Correct. The county attorney isn't available on the eleventh, so we would recommend that we bring this on the twenty-fifth.
So Jack, is that, it's here in your-
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I mean, I think everyone deserves an answer as quickly as possible. But, we're doing some gymnastics with language, so I'll agree to it.
I guess I would agree with Mr. Colars' assumption here, and I'd agree to change the second.
So then it would be a call for discussion at this point?
Discussion on the amendment?
Well, discussion on the motion as amended, because it's already been agreed to.
So now you can raise your question.
Okay. Is there a liability insurance requirement?
I don't believe that's a specific question, uh, condition, uh, but it may be part of the NRA or the other requirements that they're required to by statute. There is not a specific condition proposed requiring liability insurance.
The Congress thinks there should be? Will we just vote on the amendment, or?
Now we don't require it for other initial permits. When it comes to the issue, but.
More discussion?
You can't come back and visit it again, either.
So we have to vote on the amendment, or is it, they both agreed to the changes?
They both agreed to the changes, and that would be the going forward?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I might, and Commissioner Kemp, I believe that the practice of this board has been if the maker of a motion and the person who seconded the motion agrees to alter that motion, that is sufficient, we now have a motion that has been amended.
The main motion.
So we're on the main motion.
Okay.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chair, could we have the main motion be read again?
Sure.
I believe the motion was made and seconded by Commissioner Drantle to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions that were proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, with the additional condition that there would be, that if alcohol license is secured, that there would not be service of alcohol prior to individual shooting or service while shooting of the alcohol. That with respect to the type of gun, it's the point three nine caliber rifle, and that there is a further direction to, to staff to prepare a more specific consideration at the next meeting of the type of ammunition to be utilized in addressing the issue of the black, black powder type guns. of the type of ammunition to be utilized in addressing the issue of the black, black powder type guns as well. That's what I understood the motion to be.
So, you good with your Jack?
And Mr. Chair, that is August twenty-fifth, is the date that we would have this discussion and at, um, what we're, what's the word, after the research is done.
Well, you would, at that meeting, you would then first vote to clarify the ammunition piece and the black powder, and then adopt all of the findings and conditions that would be drafted for your consideration.
Thank you. So, you want to vote today, and if it passes, you want to vote twenty-fifth?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Technically, two votes.
Two votes, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? Oh, gosh. Call the roll, please.
Colar?
Yes.
Drantle?
Yes.
So, Pete?
No.
Tom?
No.
Yes.
Passes.
Mr. Chair, then I would ask for consideration of a motion to direct staff to prepare the appropriate findings and conditions.
I would make that motion.
Motion? In a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Vote opposition? No? Passes.
Mr. Chair, we're almost to our scheduled break, and I'm wondering if we should take it now and allow the room to clear. I'm assuming most of the folks here aren't interested in the rest of our business. If you are, you certainly can stay, but,
Sounds good.
But, we'll let everybody choose what they want to do.
Come back at ten two, five two, or you want to do it?
Are you gonna turn the-
Five two.
Five two. Can we just resume?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have, um, looking for approval for, consider for a resolution to approve, to apply for the Federal Cares Act for the election portion. The Secretary of State has received the money for the Cares Act, and they've received eight point three-two million dollars, and of that, forty percent of that was allocated to the Secretary of State to purchase polling place equipment such as face masks and hand sanitizers, and they've shipped those all out to us. Sixty percent of the grant is allocated to the counties and the polling places. They've come up with a formula, and it's located in the, in the application in Section F, if you're interested. Niccolat County has allocated twenty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents, with eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents allocated to share with the cities polling places. So, we only have four polling places left in the county, otherwise we're all mail ballots at St. Peter, North Main, Cato, Niccolat, and Cortland. And so, I'll be working with the cities, we've purchased already the, the sneeze guards, so some of that we've purchased for them. So, we'll be working with the cities on agreement, make sure that they, they do also, that that much of that goes towards their city polling places. The rest of it for the county will be used for other PPE, additional costs with the mail balloting, or with the increase in absentee balloting, it can go towards the temporary staff. There's a variety of things it can go towards, so. So, like I said, this is an eighty-twenty grant, the twenty percent of it is matched by the county or the cities, but Cares Act funds that we're getting can also be used to match that for that twenty percent, which is relatively small amount. So, with this, the Secretary of State is asking that the boards approve that by resolution that Niccolat County, that we apply for these funds for the general, or for the election season.
Kemp would move the resolution.
Motion? In a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Seth is up?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board and staff. Several items from Public Works today. The first being to consider award of bid for our twenty-twenty aggregate materials project. We received four bids, and they were opened on July twentieth for this project. The bid abstract is attached in your packet with the results of those bids. The low bidder was Tim's Trucking. They were significantly under our engineer's estimate, and significantly under the, the second lowest bidder, which is, is very good for the amount of work that we're proposing. My engineer's estimate was close to the budgeted amount that we were looking at, putting towards this project, and so based on these very low bid prices, we may ask Tim's Trucking to do some additional work, given that those, those bid prices were, were just so good. So, under this contract, we will be, the contractor will be producing class-five gravel, which we use to resurface our, our county gravel roads, and to resurface the gravel shoulders on our, on our paved roads. We also have very clean sand material in our pit, and so some of that will be screened off to be used in our winter maintenance operations as part of our sand salt mix that we use. What's a little different about this contract this year is that we need to strip about fifty-five thousand cubic yards of overburden in our pit to get access to better quality material for making our class-five gravel in future years. This year, we didn't have a need to do our, our typical SealCo program, and so we're shifting some of those funds that are typically used for the SealCo program to help with the stripping of, of this overburden. So, I'm asking the board today to award our twenty-twenty aggregate materials project to Tim's Trucking for the low bid amount of two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and ten dollars.
So, move, second.
Motion, the second? Seth, where's Tim's Trucking?
Oh, jeez.
It's on the way to their address.
Okay. Any other question? Class-five is what, like eighty percent gravel and twenty percent clay, or?
Oh, I can't give, it's much more complicated than that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's definitely not twenty percent clay, or else it'd be an absolute mess, so.
Is the source of this from our pit?
The majority of it will be from our pit. Our pit is a bit short on large rock, which you need to crush down to meet the, the upper limits of the coarser gradation of class-five. So, we make it known in the proposal that the contractor to meet the requirements may have to import outside rock material.
To do the mix.
They may also have to import outside clay material that has the plasticity content that, that our mix requires. So, some import may be needed unless they can find it all in our pit and it meets specifications.
Have we used Tim's before for something else, or is this their first time?
No, this is, this is the first time.
But didn't we see them on something, another project? Were they a suburb to another project?
You know, I don't believe so. You may be thinking of, um, on one of the ditch contracts.
Yeah.
There's a trunky, a trucking company, or the, the trucking name was part of the name.
Okay.
But no, we've never worked with Tim's Trucking before. In the proposal, we did highly recommend that any potential bidders meet with my highway maintenance manager to do an actual site visit and look over the site and talk about any questions they had on the specifications. And I believe every one of the bidders actually did that, so they should be well aware of what they're getting into.
More questions for Seth? Mr. Chair, so Seth, on the issue, do, you do research on firms that we haven't used before? I, I don't know anything about Tim's Trucking either, but how do you check their validity, their work?
Uh, we didn't do real in-depth research into Tim's Trucking. Most of it was my highway maintenance manager and that one-on-one meeting discussing with them their operation and equipment, and their knowledge of what they're getting into. And his response back to me from that meeting was that he was quite impressed with, with their knowledge of even the most detailed parts of the specifications, which a lot of contractors that come in to make gravel aren't aware of, of what we're actually looking for, so.
Well, it's a terrific bid, so.
Absolutely.
More questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, no? Nobody? Thank you, passes.
Uh, the next item for the board's consideration is consider a professional service proposal for the County Road twenty-one slope slide. Gale Tech and SRF have concluded their initial investigations and reports for the County Road twenty-one slope slide issue. And as I have reported at previous board meetings, Gale Tech has recommended one temporary remediation measure, and then two additional options for permanent repair of the slope. And so, right now, our focus is to do a temporary slope repair, so we can get the eastbound lane of County Road twenty-one back open later this fall and for over winter. We also need some additional time then to work on final plans and specifications for the permanent repair, which we would look at, hopefully doing some time next year. And so, to, we need a small plan set and specs developed for the temporary repair, and this is what this attached professional service proposal is, is the expense to produce those, those documents.
I'll make the motion. For the expenditure.
I'll second it.
And if I may, as part of that motion, if you would authorize me to sign their proposal.
So, it is, so it is said, yes. Is that okay, Abby?
Any more discussion? I did look at that Sunday too, and it looks like it's holding pretty well for now, but there was an awful lot of turbulence in the water adjacent to it.
Yes, the Minnesota River is coming up very fast.
Seth will have an update on twenty-one after this.
Yeah, if the board allows, I can go into further updates on flood.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, oh, passes.
Um, a little bit more just on this item as additional information. I have reached out to MnDOT and Federal Highway, and we're investigating any potential uses of federal highway disaster funds or state aid disaster funds. So, there is the potential that maybe parts of this project, if not the whole project, may be covered by some of those, but it's not a given at, at this time, but we, we continue to work towards that, that end. So, if I may, I can give a flooding update and project update. So, as you've all are aware, we received a significant amount of rain over the entire county Saturday, late Saturday night into Sunday morning, anywhere from probably six to twelve inches was received over the bulk of the county, and we are definitely seeing damage from, from that event. We have a new, pretty significant slide that is developed on County Road twenty-one, a half, about a half mile east of the intersection with Trunk Highway Four. This is a decent, a slope slid out up to the shoulder of County Road twenty-one. We have a lot of erosion in, in the stream bed, which we will definitely need to repair. Topography, of course, is, is very challenging. I'm gonna be reaching out to Mathewitz Construction to do a site visit to see if they have the time and, and to possibly fix that issue immediately.
Would that include having to restabilize that slope, or?
Yes, it would include restabilizing that slope. It's not as an extensive problem as twenty-one east of County Road fourteen, but we need to get in there and, and fix that as soon as possible. This will probably be an expense of thirty to fifty thousand dollars, maybe more.
On rock.
But, we need to move very quickly on that one, so we don't lose more of the, of the road in that location.
Need a motion on that?
I don't think so.
No, I'm not asking for a motion on that. Further on County Road twenty-one, of course, we have the existing slide that occurred some time ago east of County Road fourteen. Another large slide occurred about three hundred and fifty feet to the west, which wasn't as part of the scope of work that we were talking with SRF and Gale Tech, so closer to the bridge. A little further out from the shoulder and, and driving surfaces of County Road twenty-one, but it was a-
That, that fix might have to get bigger?
The fix will be getting bigger. Maybe a temporary fix, maybe a temporary permanent fix in that location, but I'll have to reach out to Gale Tech to, to have more conversations on that. But it was a significant amount of material that disappeared, and it, the Minnesota River completely ate it. You can't even see where that material went.
Slough away, it's just gone.
And so, the Minnesota River is definitely coming up fast and high, and that does not bode well, because every time the river comes up and saturates everything underneath County Road twenty-one, and then the river drops, that's when we see more slides. So, we will keep an eye on it, and then hopefully no further damage happens. Uh, County Road fourteen, there was a new slide that developed on, on the hill. Not as large as the one that occurred last year, but definitely another slide that occurred oh, maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet south of where the big slide occurred. We, I will be talking with Gale Tech to see if, as part of our permanent repair project, if we will have to do some more, expand the scope of that project some. We were gonna do some work in this area anyway, we just may have to do a little bit more. The park sustained, Seven Mile Creek Park sustained damage again. We have at least one pedestrian bridge with one abutment washed out, the pilings are exposed. So, we got that bridge closed until we can assess and make repairs there. And we just have damage upon damage from multiple years racking up here. We are still working with FEMA to receive potential FEMA funding for, for damage from last year and even two thousand and eighteen, and so we just can't seem to catch a break. Uh, yesterday, we did open bids on the County Road fourteen permanent repair. We received one bid. There was two other bidders that were going to submit bids, but from their propos, uh, bid package, they withdrew their two bids because they were not submitting all the required documents to be a, a bid that you could open and, and read. And so, Mathewitz was the only bidder. They were eighteen percent over the engineer's estimate, which isn't completely surprising, given the, the tight timeframe that this project would have to be constructed. Tight timeframe between bid opening and actual project start. And the site is a very challenging site to, to work on. And so, since there's federal disaster funds involved, state disaster funds involved, MnDOT and Federal Highway will have to weigh in on if that bid can be fully accepted or not. I will be making a recommendation that they should accept it. And of course, the DBE Office, the Office of Civil Rights, will also have to review and approve Mathewitz's DBE goal that they had set for this. So, it'll be some time before we will be given the yes or no to go ahead and award that project. I'm confident that it, we will get that approval, but it's not a hundred percent. So, that's my update at this time. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
How have we puttered along on the bridge on twenty-one, your new bridge?
Uh, not a lot could-
Our new bridge, I should say.
Lot of not, uh, not much could occur since our last meeting and the update that I, I gave you, because the deck had to achieve a hundred percent of its anticipated concrete strength before you can have any equipment up on it. Plus, there is a minimum eight-day wet cure time that you want to keep that deck completely encased and, and wet to achieve that max concrete strength. We had to do that, even though the potential exists for some of the deck to be removed to fix the problem where the deck forms let go, and we have SAG in, in that brand-new deck. And so, um, between our last meeting and now, I met with Ericsson Engineering, which was the bridge designer, contractor, and myself to kind of start talking through a game plan on where do we go from here. The worst area is gonna be sought out and removed. Additional concrete may have to be- Additional concrete may have to be removed once we can see more of the internal structure. Ericsson Engineering is going to be hiring American Engineering Testing to come down and do some further non-destructive testing on the entire deck that'll hopefully show us and tell us if there's other areas in the deck that may have the, where the concrete has delaminated or the bond has been broken between the concrete and the rebar, which is not a good thing if you have that happen because they're to bond together and act as one. So it'll take some time to figure out what the ultimate fix will be on that, but it's definitely going to have a significant amount of time to completion of that project.
Do we anticipate potentially, if we can come to an agreement, getting it repaired or getting it closer to finish this year yet, or is this going to run over?
Every goal is to have this repair made and the project complete and open sometime this fall before winter. There's a significant amount of water running through that area. The bridge performed extremely well. There's a massive pile of timber on the outlet end, which meant it all passed through and under the bridge without plugging it. That was the problem before with the old box culverts in there. That material would plug and cause major issues. If those box culverts would still be in there with this type of rain event, I think the road would have washed out this time. So that was very positive to see. High water did damage some of the riprap that was put in, but we still had more riprap work to do as part of the contract. So it was nice to see a very large rain event of this sort and see where the weak spots were in that and so we can repair those and add a little bit more to flood proof it. So should be very good in the future.
Were all that timber piled up that the river actually cut a new channel there?
No, the river had already started cutting off to the southwest. Yep.
More questions for Seth? Are you got more subjects yet?
No, not at this time. I probably could go on and on and on, but that's enough positive news.
I just wanted to comment on, Mathewitz was our primary for Twelve, right?
Yes.
And they've been out.
Well, but I, what I found the other day is that they're tracking some of that work with their own little video vignettes on Facebook, which I thought were kind of cool. I don't know if you have seen them yet or not, but they're...
I don't have Facebook, so.
Well, you might.
So they're posting...
They're posting some of their work, so they're taking pictures and kind of telling you what's going on and I just...
What the plan is.
What the plan is. I just thought it was pretty informative, so.
Oh, good. We'll have to check that out.
We may want to highlight that in one of our newspaper, or news articles, that that might be a referral we can give our citizens out there that they could follow along and it's less video you would have to shoot.
Sure. And so they're posting stuff for County Road Twelve already?
Yep.
Oh, that's great.
Yep.
It'll be a very interesting project.
And as usual, it was a windy day when they were...
It was, but I mean, it's still, it's still information that I think is helpful for those folks out there.
Yeah, it's a very unique project, be it the state, county, township, city. You typically don't build through standing water like this.
So, yeah.
And they've been there and the gas people have been there. They're planning on putting it in this coming week.
Yeah, your fireplace should work here in August still.
So, but, I'll talk to you about that later. Never mind, I'm sorry.
Anything else for Seth? Thank you, Seth.
Yep.
Okay, should we call her today or should we talk to our county attorney?
I think you've talked to her too much. I have, I'm sorry.
She's got burned out, huh?
The issue before the board today is there is a proof of claim that is in the signature folder that I'm asking the board to consider. As the board may be aware, there is significant litigation involving the opioid crisis. Purdue is one of the individuals that is involved. They have filed for bankruptcy and part of that bankruptcy process is to file a proof of claim. As noted in the agenda item, there is an online calculator that has been developed as part of the bankruptcy process that estimates the county's potential claim that could be utilized for that bankruptcy process. I'm not here before the board today to ask for anything other than authorization to file the proof of claim. There are a lot of litigants involved with a finite amount of dollars, so I am not representing in any fashion to the board that this would be the amount Niklet County would receive. I anticipate that the push from the court and the bankruptcy proceeding as well as the litigation is to fund education and intervention programs, more so than giving counties some actual cash response, or cash rewards is what I am hearing coming out of that litigation. But at this point, to preserve the county's claim in any bankruptcy, I'm asking for a motion to have Commissioner Lipke sign the proof of claim and I will file that by the twenty, or by the thirtieth at five-thirty, I believe is my deadline.
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion in a second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Passes. Thank you. Ryan, you're up.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and in the interest of time, since we do have several things left on the agenda today, I can turn my twenty-minute cares discussion into two minutes if that's okay.
Yes.
Just a quick update here. I have two more informational sessions this week with AMC and the Minnesota Office of Management and Budget regarding Cares Act clarification, so I'll be watching those. Health and Human Services are moving forward with trying to put together an eviction assistance and childcare assistance program, yet hopefully this month. We were looking at doing PPE kits for businesses. Now, the state has said they're going to provide four million masks and other PPE to businesses regarding the mandatory mask requirement, so we're not sure where we stand with that as far as need, but I think the plan will be still to have something ready should there need be there in the future. Health and Human Services are meeting with schools next week to discuss back-to-school needs primarily related to health issues, but I did ask Cassie to bring up what their PPE and distance learning needs might be, and I plan to also try to reach out to school districts here just to start a conversation. And then I would just encourage commissioners to, over the next couple of weeks, to visit with your businesses in your districts that may qualify for the proposed program that we discussed last week and just see if there's an interest in need out there.
Thank you. Yes, Jack?
Ryan, thank you for that last note. I've been continuing to meet and share with folks in the business community that I frequent and continue to get good feedback on that. If there are specific questions that arise that they're asking me, who should I ask? You directly?
Yeah, they can come right to me for with questions.
Are you doing a press release at all?
Well, not until the board would make a decision on it. So I'll have it on the agenda again for our first meeting in August.
More questions for Ryan?
Thank you for that, Ryan.
So, I guess we're up to me. Chair's report. After our last meeting, I went to Gale for a ditch meeting, had a meeting with the state auditor, and congratulations, Heather. Sounds like you got a A. Went to the workshop, also ditch meeting that same day, Brown-Niklet meeting, took a little road tour on Sunday and saw some of our projects on County Road Fourteen and Twenty-One and saw all the flooding in Lafayette. And that's my report. Terry?
I joined the rest of y'all on the workshop and I had a, oh, I'm sorry, and the public health meeting, Niklet Brown, Public Health.
Denny?
Let's see, Treatment Court, SECB, Finance Committee meeting, July LAC meeting, ditch authority meeting. We had our board workshop, our finance subcommittee for SCEMS, and my general board meeting for SCEMS, and that brings me up today.
Marie?
I also attended a ditch meeting in Gale after our last board meeting. We had a law library meeting in Gale. We had the joint powers transit board meeting in Gale. I tuned into the RSTP. I'm zoning live, my board workshop, and pitch day. For my professional work, I had technology practice, which is very important.
You still don't want to buy that big screen, do you?
There's thieves everywhere, just put it that way. Brown-Niklet, can you help with the...
Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, workshop, CHS, and here.
Okay, Ryan, we have any medias or conferences to approve?
No.
Okay, but per diems, expenses?
Move it, or second it, whichever.
Motion in a second?
We'll leave it to Abby to decide which.
I think it was Jack's motion, wasn't it?
I'll second it then.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Passes. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned from that. What's the wishes? We just going to keep going? Let's...
Why don't we keep going and it'll take a couple of minutes to probably get Roger set up in the closed session, so I would say get to...
Well, we can do some of this stuff, right?
Go to the closed session. Go ahead and proceed with the rest of the agenda, because I'm trying to say.
Okay. Consent agenda?
Move it.
Second.
Motion in a second on consent agenda. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? For the special drainage authority minutes. Oh, that's in it, right? Okay, it's everything.
Yeah, that was part of that.
So we're done with the regular drainage authority meeting?
Well, we could set the...
Consent.
I have a couple items.
You got start of number two there.
Okay, sorry. Seth, is this your...
Hi.
One, two, three, and four.
I have a few items before you today. The first one is to set the hearing date for ditch cleanings. At this time of year, we generally get some requests. At the time that I did the agenda item, I had two ditches, twenty-four A and sixteen A, and now we have forty-eight A as well. And so I would like to set the public hearing for those for August twenty-fifth at ten o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All aye.
I'm just wondering, is ten o'clock going to conflict with any discussion that's going to be needed on the planning and zoning gun issue?
I was curious with that.
Because this will be a public hearing, we'll have to commence it at ten o'clock, so I'm wondering if you want to look at maybe having it at ten-thirty or eleven to allow first采time for the gun issue.
Let's do ten-thirty. I'll change my motion to ten-thirty. I just, let's finish that other issue expeditiously.
Motion and a...
Yes.
Second, for ten-thirty, that date? All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you. The next item is a follow-up from the public hearing for County Ditch Seventy-Seven Lateral Two for the correction of benefits. That public hearing was July twenty-first. And the board, the Drainage Authority did approve these changes. It was just that the findings needed to be generated and Michelle Zender Fisher, the county attorney, has drawn up those findings and the actual benefits are attached as Exhibit A. So I'd be looking for approval for those findings of facts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Passes.
Next item is similar. It's to consider the findings for the improvement project. The final engineer's hearing was held on July twenty-first, and at that meeting, it was approved to move forward, and those findings are attached as well as Exhibit A for the determination of benefits for the improvement portion.
Move it.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Yes, we're clear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Passes.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
So do we have to do anything to make this a closed meeting?
We do, but are we ready?
I can be ready. If you are ready.
With first before, you do that, you need to read what is in the agenda item, that is a closed session and the purpose for closing the session.
In black, you mean?
Yes.
This portion of the meeting is closed for attorney-client privilege pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Chapter Thirteen D, to discuss litigation regarding the improvement project on Niklet County Ditch Sixty-Two A.
So we'll now go into recess and have the closed session.
And have the closed session, correct?
Okay, we'll go into recess and have the closed session. Okay, we opened the drainage, public drainage authority meeting. Anything to discuss?
I'd move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you.